Welcome, everybody, to our December 13th City Commission Work Session. We'll call this meeting to order, and Nikki, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements this morning. Well, first, we just all realize that our former Commissioner Deborah Kynes, it's her birthday today, and we would normally be celebrating it. I doubt she's watching, but if she is, happy birthday, Deb.
It's her first birthday gift would be not to watch it.
Yeah, probably. And then, of course, we will be celebrating today for December 31st, Commissioner Gal's birthday. So if anybody wants to join us afterwards for cake, please feel free. All right, first on our agenda, Anne, are you back there? Yep. So first on our agenda is, under Presentations, are the Witches of Dunedin, who are going to present a donation check for the money they raised during the Halloween season for a Mother's Arms, Inc. So they are flying their way in. Come on down. We're ready.
Are you ready for us?
We're ready.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome. They keep flying in.
Oh, my goodness.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
So these ladies have worked really hard this season to entertain our lovely community, but also to raise money for organizations around our community and our county. And... Oop.
Interesting ways.
And I will, I will turn it over to Allison, our lead witch.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, everyone on the Commission, for having us today. And we are very happy to present to, come on up, Chant. Chant Davis, a Mother's Arms, our charity that we chose this year. And we've worked really hard this season, and I told you when I met you, we were going to make a difference for you, didn't I?
Yes, ma'am.
And we are very happy and proud to present $10,252 for Mother's Arms.
Kept our promise.
Yes, you did.
So, yes, we have worked very hard for this, and we are very happy to present this to them. Because, you know, during our season, excuse me, people kept saying, well, what is a Mother's Arms? Nobody knew who they were. And when we would tell them, they were like, oh, my gosh, that's so awesome. And now people are going to know who you are. And what you're doing is so needed in our community, in many communities. But thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell us a little bit of something about a Mother's Arms?
Yeah, if I can turn my water system off. Yes, my organization is dedicated to baby Jordan Bellevue, the two-year toddler that was killed by his young mom out in Largo, and his body was dumped down from Largo Central Park. Arms, meaning arriving to relieve mothers under stress. I take the women through an eight-week curriculum course of life skills and empowerment training, how to deal with stress, money management, and I bring in guest speakers that can give them more insight and expertise on how to handle situations in their lives. Once they graduate, then they become honorary members of a Mother's Arms, and then they're able to earn three hours of respite relief. When I went out and I researched with parents and other moms, and the young lady that killed her son, because I did go and visit her and speak with her and asked to dedicate it to her child. And she's very grateful for it, because she says hopefully there's other parents who will receive the help that she didn't get, because she said there's no instructions that come with motherhood on how to be a parent. And they all stressed how much they needed, you know, time alone. They just needed time to think or just time for themselves. So I, you know, wrote the curriculum myself that I teach. And again, coming from the ideas of what they missed in their lives, what they needed in their lives, what they needed more understanding of. And as long as they're empowering themselves, I'm here to help them and be there for them, and that timeout they receive so that they can have that you-time that they're looking for. You know, because kids are stressful. They're very stressful. I know, I have them. So, again, as long as they are empowering themselves and they keep building on making themselves stronger, my goal is to make stronger parents that'll make stronger children, in turn make stronger families and stronger communities. So I'm here for them. God put a vision in me, and he says, I need for you to help the mothers and save the children. And that's what I plan on doing. And I'm so blessed to have the witches come along to see my vision with me, to bring it into fruition. And Dunedin should be very, very thankful for having such a beautiful bunch of women like these. And I love them.
Well, we love them, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking that on. It's an important, certainly important issue for both moms and dads.
Yes.
Sometimes you've got single dads, too.
Yes, and they can come through as well. My program doesn't discriminate at all, at all. You know, I'm here to prevent child abuse, neglecting the death of the children.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, we're, we're so proud of the witches. They, you know, people think, oh, they're just out a couple nights in the month of October. You know, I think they start practicing. They start practicing in, what, July or August or something? And, and then there is special events beyond Halloween. But you've really created, you know, and just added to our vibe here in Dunedin. And we thank you all. Each one of you are contributors to our community in so many other ways, and the fact that you do this on top of what you already do. We're very appreciative, and you represent Dunedin well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Great job, ladies. All right, Antonello's going to want to get a picture. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good day. Thank you so much.
So cool. Okay, now we'll move on to citizen input. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on any item that is not already on the agenda, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing them, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from November 3rd, 15th, and 21st. We have board and committee appointments, Architectural Review Committee, Code Enforcement Committee, Committee on Aging, Local Planning Agency, Public Safety Committee, and the Social Services Committee. We have the Downtown Dunedin Merchants Association, Mardi Gras Revocable License Agreement, and we have, from the Department of State, the Division of Historical Resources Small Matching Grant Agreement for Citywide Historic Resources. And the survey, are there any items to be polled? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Torma and Commissioner Frehny, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yep, you guys can go. Bye, Jack. All right, we'll move on to action items. And this is the Architectural Design Services for the Dunedin Golf Club Course Restoration. Jennifer, did you have any opening remarks that you wanted to?
Mayor, I think our Director of Parks and Recreation, Vince Giszi, has this keyed up perfectly.
Oh, you were waiting for that.
I was. I practiced that this morning.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. Vince Giszi, Parks and Recreation Director. Along with me is Bruce Worth, our Senior Engineer, and some other staff that have been involved in this project are with us this morning. Laney Sheets, our Administration Superintendent and author of the RFQ, along with Bruce. Craig Wilson, our City Arborist, and Les Tyler, our Finance Director. If we need certain questions answered, they're, they'll be here to help us out. I also want to introduce our recommended consultants. Lori Viola, a Senior Planner and Project Manager for Stantech Consulting Services, Inc., Clearwater, Florida. And Chris Spence, Golf Course Designer with Spence Golf Course Designs, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. And you'll be hearing from them shortly. So, welcome. So I just want to give a brief summary of how we got here this morning and how Stantech and Spence was selected to do the architectural services for our project. On June 7th, 2022, city staff provided a status update to the City Commission on the process and future steps of the transition of the Dunedin Golf Club to city operations. The discussion included budget, personnel, food and beverage options, capital improvements, and master plan. During this workshop, the Phase One capital improvements were discussed, including the restoration of the Donald Ross design, also renovated greens, tee boxes, fairways, bunkers, irrigation, and drainage improvements. The cost of Phase One was estimated at approximately $4 million. These funds were subsequently budgeted in fiscal year '23 and '24. Architectural services for the Dunedin Golf Club Course renovations was solicited beginning August 19th. Proposals were accepted until September 20th. The city selected firms qualified to provide professional architectural services to develop a master plan, along with services required for design and permitting of the restoration of the 18-hole golf course. The selected consultant is also responsible for providing detailed cost estimates for each element related to construction of the renovated project. The consulting services shall also include site inspections once construction is underway. Five proposals were received and independently reviewed. An evaluation team was comprised of Ed Shaughnessy, Bel Air Country Club General Manager, who's going through a Donald Ross construction, reconstruction now. Chuck Winship, Dunedin Golf Club Board of Directors. Kevin Genica, who's here this morning, Dunedin Golf Club Board of Directors. Bruce Worth, Laney, and myself. The team evaluated and ranked the submittals. As a result of initial evaluation, the team decided to interview the top three ranked firms. On October 27th, Stantech Consulting Services, Inc. was ranked as the most qualified to meet the needs of the city's project. City staff checked the firm's references and received favorable responses. Parks and Recreation staff, along with Engineering Bruce, reviewed Stantech's proposal and confirmed the price of $405,691 to be appropriated for the defined scope of work. Opera funds were currently available, opera funds are currently available, for these architectural services in fiscal year '23 budget. Just a brief summary of the schedule, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lori and Chris. We're looking, these are just some highlights. On-site master plan review with staff and consultant. Going to go out and review each hole individually to see how this plan is going to work and also to make sure that we're working through some of the issues, some of the concerns with, with, with trees on the course. The master plan will be presented to the community in February, presented to the City Commission in March. Construction documents will be bid out in August, and construction will begin in early spring of 2024. Completion expected to be in November of '24. Staff recommends award of this project to Stantech Consulting Services, Clearwater, Florida. And now, again, introduce Lori Viola, Chris Spence. Would like to do a brief review of their experience in golf courses, especially the Donald Ross courses, Donald Ross design, their qualifications, and a little bit about their approach to the project. So with that, Lori?
Welcome.
Thank you, Vince. I have to stand up, because it's the only time I'm going to be taller than Chris, and maybe not even.
You're more than welcome to stand up here if you want. It might be easier.
I don't know, that's too scary up there. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, we're, Chris and I are really, really grateful to be here today, and we're very excited about the project. I'm Lori Viola from Stantech. You may have remembered me from Cardno, which Stantech bought our company the last year, and so we've been going through a transition. I had the pleasure of working with Bob Ironsmith's team at the city for a couple years ago, for a few months, while one of his project managers took early retirement. So I've met a lot of you during Pioneer Park renovation and some of the other projects. My background is in landscape architecture, and I have done a lot of golf course work. In my first part of my career, I actually was a golf course designer. I worked for Jack Nicholas, Gary Player, some of those names you might have heard of before, and then Carl Litton. We actually did the first grassed golf course in Dubai, United Arab Emirates, which, at the time, nobody ever heard of it, but it now has become a very popular destination. So I do have a lot of golf course design background. I did, I had my own company for a few years and did a lot of renovation work throughout the state of Florida, in the Caribbean, but I did not have any kind of historic background design. So when this project came to fruition, and we saw that, I, I talked to a couple people finding, when is that golf course going to get renovated? I want to be a part of that. And then when I read it, I, I read about what the, you know, what the club was looking for, and I'm like, wow, we just don't have that kind of background. I've got to find a, a Donald Ross guru. And so I reached out to my golf colleagues, and Chris's name kept popping up. So I reached out to Chris, and it come to find out, he had already been helping out the club with a study previously, a Donald Ross, you know, look at the, the historical background of the course and its design. And we talked about how we could work together as a team, knowing that Cardno, now Stantech, could work on all of the construction documents, and having worked with the city before, understanding that, you know, process very well, and also the permitting, we thought we would make, you know, a really strong team coming in. And my golf course background, being that I'm local here in Safety Harbor, I can be at the course at any time during construction. I'm, you know, available. I love, I love working with everybody at the city. So we talked about it, and we felt like this was a really good, a good team for us. And so we presented, and we're here today, and we're looking forward to working with the club and the city and the community. As, as Vince said, our next step, which is really going to be an important one, is in January, to get out with the city team and ride each hole, get out and look at what our basis for a master plan is, and make sure we update it to meet everybody's needs, and then present that to the community in February. And then in March, we'll be back here again. And hopefully, we'll be on to construction drawings, as Vince said, to go out to bid in the fall next year, and then to construction the following. So that's my background, and I'd like to turn it over to Chris now, and he can give you his Donald Ross experience and how he came to be a part of this team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. It's a pleasure to be here. I've been in the, the golf course design business for about 25 years. I've been in the golf business for almost 40 years. Early in my career, I was a golf course superintendent. So I have a very extensive agronomic background, golf course maintenance background, in addition to design and construction. So I'm, my background is very diverse and unique in golf architectural circles, so to speak. I've done about 60 golf courses in the last 25 years. 20 of those were Donald Ross golf courses. I'm currently working with Donald Ross golf courses in Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Florida. Probably most notable down here was Sarah Bay in Sarasota. Also designed around 1926, very similar property to Dunedin. And so I, I spend a lot of time on, on Donald Ross golf courses. Being from North Carolina, it was Donald Ross's winter home. He did about 40 golf courses up there. So I, I have, I spend a lot of time on, on his work, but, so I, I never worked for a modern golf architectural firm. My, my entire career is in, in classic restoration and, and renovation of old golf courses. And sometimes I'll take a modern golf course and make it appear old. So some of the unique aspects of, of the Dunedin project is the, the original golf course was, was just magnificent. When we look at the plans, and we can compare those plans to a lot of the golf courses. Donald Ross was on point. He was, he was given a directive to build a great golf course, and some of the, the news articles support that. So when we look at what's out there, that golf course has changed. And we have an opportunity at Dunedin to, to sensitively restore and uncover an original Donald Ross golf course. The original course is still there. It's just been covered over with some layers of, of, of sand buildup and turf growth. And, you know, we're, we're approaching 100 years on this golf course. So it's something I've seen a few other times, but this is, this is a little more unique to where we can, we can, it's almost like an archaeological excavation. So it's a little more of a sensitive approach that requires me to sort of hand-direct a lot of these elements and uncover this original golf course. So at the end of the, the project, you're going to have in your possession one of the most authentic Donald Ross golf courses in the country, one of about 400 that he did, about 300 remain. And to be a part of that is very exciting for me, to go down and, and find those original surface layers of bunkers and things like that, and uncover them, and expose those to the golfers. Now, what they see, that's what they're going to see, and that's what they're going to play golf on. Beneath that is going to be modern construction. So we have healthy turf, well-performing greens, better drainage, new, modern irrigation, those kind of things. So the, the project has a lot of layers, and I know we, we don't have a lot of time today, but I'm, I'm very excited to be a part of this team. When Lori, when Lori called me, one of the difficulties in, in this business is being able to be on, onsite enough. So there's design needs, there's construction oversight needs. And when, when Lori called me and explained to me her background in golf design and construction, I knew it was the perfect fit. So I, I quickly agreed to, to join forces. And, and I think it's a perfect fit to make sure this project is done properly architecturally, but it's done on time with the right materials, and, and our construction timeframes and things like that are met adequately. But that's, thank you for, for the opportunity to come and speak with you.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add, Vince?
No, at this time, we'll take any questions you may have.
Okay. Anything else, Jennifer, you wanted to add?
Nothing further, ma'am.
All right. Questions? Vice Mayor, any questions?
Well, thank you very much. I'm going to tell you why I don't have any questions. I've had the opportunity to talk with various people within the community, a great conversation, a detailed conversation with the city manager with what's been happening. I follow, have been following this very closely. I have been the liaison before for the golf club and am now the liaison again. I'm quite aware of golf. I've played a lot of golf, and I've been on a lot of golf courses. And, and I've read through the information, and I was really pleased with, with the combination that we had here. And, and based on the additional communication I've had with other, other folks about that discovery, I really don't have any questions about the presentation.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner?
No, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, but right now, I think we've, we've discussed this. It's kind of exciting for me to be able to take the next step in, in reaching the goal of, of bringing it back, so I'm ready to get started.
Commissioner, any questions?
So Vince, just one. Clarifying, we're going to spend $4 million overall on the project, so is this, and you may have said this, but is this part of the $4 million?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't really have anything either. I mean, I feel the, your passion, and, and you feel the sense of the personality of the project, which is exciting for me. I like that you're close by, and I, I know that you have the passion for it. So I, I just, it, it looks like a good combination to me.
Any questions?
Question, I got some comments. First of all...
Well, let me open it to the public, because everybody, I'm sorry. Everybody has taken the liberty of making their comments now, but I would like to open it to the public first. Anybody from the public wish to come forward and speak to this item? Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kevin Janigah. I'm a member of the Dunedin Golf Club Board. First of all, I want to thank several of the Commissioners, Jennifer Bramley, Vince Giszi. They came out to our Donald Ross 150th Birthday Party, which was a hoot, by the way. And we had a great time, got to present them a, a nice book. But just to reiterate, I, I'm extremely excited that you've selected this team, because I've done a lot of background work on this as well. Back in fall of 2020, when I was Chair of the Dunedin Golf Course Maintenance as well. Back in fall of 2020, when I was Chair of the Dunedin Golf Course Maintenance Grounds Committee, we decided that, you know, instead of trying to Band-Aid everything that was going wrong with our golf course, infrastructure was starting to fail, we said, well, hey, maybe we need to step back and develop a long-range plan to fix this. So I started making some phone calls around, talking to various clubs about who we might be able to hire to help us do a master plan. And I talked to two or three different architects. And, and most, a couple of the architects I talked to really weren't that interested in just doing a master plan. They want to get straight to construction. But then I talked to the general manager at Sarah Bay, Paul Barone. And he said, Kevin, he goes, the man for this project, the designer you want, is Chris Spence. I think he would do a fantastic job. He's done working on our golf course. Everything he's done has been on time, on schedule, and very authentic. So I talked to Chris. And unlike the other people I talked to on the phone, he was immediately very passionate, very excited about it. He knew some of the history of what we have here in Dunedin. And he came down, took a look, gave us a proposal, and he even connected us with the Donald Ross Society. And because of that connection, we were able to get a $15,000 grant from the Donald Ross Society to help us pay for the master plan. And so we hired Chris. He came in, did a beautiful job on the master plan. And then we kind of sat for a while. And then all of a sudden, you know, things started to change. The city started showing a lot of interest in the restoration. ARPA funds came through and here we are. But I've also had the opportunity to talk to several other clubs, I think three or four clubs, and they all say the same thing, that Chris does a wonderful job. He's, he's great to work with. And it's personal to him. And he will do everything in his power to bring it in on time and on budget. I also had the opportunity to speak to Lori a couple of years ago when I was looking to pull together some information for the project as well. And she was very, very cooperative. And I was very impressed with her enthusiasm. So in summary, I just want to thank the city for getting us to this point. I think the restoration of our golf course is going to be an incredible economic engine for the local economy. I know the members, a lot of the local residents who play at our course are extremely excited. We've already, we picked up 16 new members last month, just based on the buzz of what's going on with our golf course. So I just want to thank you again and just say wholeheartedly, I fully support this team here and I think they'll do a wonderful job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to this item? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Tauranga. Thank you. Any final comments?
Sure. No, I mean, I think, Kevin, appreciate your passion. You've had a lot of passion all the way. And sometimes that's what it takes to keep driving the project. But I, I mean, I do get citizens who ask why we're kind of putting this kind of investment into a golf club. This is really what we should be doing. But it's a huge linchpin for our community. It's historic. As, even though Commissioner Kynes is not here, she would be saying that. It's historic. And, but it's also like a big linchpin for like our biggest community of Fairway Estates. It's huge. It's huge to our residents and it's an asset that, that we should make what it needs to be, what it should be. So I'm excited. I, I do get a great feeling about what you two want to bring to the project. And I think it's a good investment in our community and this is a great kickoff to it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
I appreciate the work that Mr. Janick has done on this and, and his team. And I'm really happy that we have the team that we have looking at this at this point in time. The comments have been made previously, but we know we have a great historical golf club here. And, and Donald Ross is certainly highly respected. And so, and you guys know that is much even more than what I do. I've been involved with, with this club indirectly and directly for, for almost 30 years now. I actually took the video of this and put this in, this was on a game in Europe called, called Greens. And the, the reason why it was in that video was because it was a Donald Ross course. Not so much because it was in Dunedin, but then therefore it was in Dunedin and a Donald Ross course. So the historic, the history is just incredible. So I'm real pleased that we have a team that understands that really, really well. Thank you.
Commissioner?
I, I agree with all the comments that Vince said so far. It's historic. It is certainly one of those key assets in, in the community. Has been for decades since its inception. The fact that it's Donald Ross is even better. Chris, we certainly know who you are. Lori, we knew you from other things, but it was wonderful to hear your background as far as golf and golf courses and things of that nature. I'm a big fan of passion, so I can't speak anymore positively about Kevin and, and his passion for, for driving this train. So again, I'm just excited to get going.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Walker?
Yeah. So I also, a lot of just very positive feedback from the community with regards to the excitement around this particular project. The course opened on January 1st, 1927. So it is almost 100 years of, of operation. And there was a period of time it was also home to a number of different PGA tournaments. And, you know, I think the, there are two aspects to this, and this is really to echo what the other commissioners have mentioned, but the historical significance, obviously, there's a lot of excitement around that. And then the second one is, is of course, I, I think, I think there's also a lot of excitement around the economic impact to, to our, our great city. And anyway, it looks like we got the right team in place. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to take just a quick second to, to thank our internal team for all the hard work that they've been doing in meeting with the golf club. Thank you to the golf club. Y'all have formed a really good working relationship. And I, I know that's appreciated by all of us. Any news you want to announce over there? I didn't ask you before the meeting.
Not yet.
Not yet? Fingers crossed. And we're very excited about getting underway with this project. I think the, the RFP team has done their job in picking the right people. So we, we certainly appreciate that. And kind of building off of what Commissioner Franny was saying, you know, I think, and what I'm so proud of this commission for and, and our organization on the whole, is we don't look at things in terms of either or. We look at things in terms of what's important in our community. And maybe that one item doesn't serve everybody. No one item does. But what is important in our community? And we want to put our best foot forward in all of the things that we do. And, and that's something that I'm always really proud of with Dunedin. And the golf club is no different. You know, in our, in our efforts to, to now operate this thing, everything we're going to do is we're going to put our best foot forward. Just like we tried to do when we built our new community center, just shortly before you, you got here, Vince. And everything we do is elevated. And so I don't think it's a choice of either or, ever. I think it's, let's put our best foot forward. And that's what we're trying to do. That's what's important to our community. And I appreciate y'all stepping forward. We'll, we'll see what happens throughout the process and, and we all look forward to it. So roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gao.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Tauranga.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tauranga. Sorry. Commissioner Franny.
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski.
Aye. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yay!
That takes a while. Sorry. My brains.
You know, it, it could take me as long as six months to stop stumbling on that one. Okay. We have the proposed agenda for January 10th work session. Any items to be added? I don't see any. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Gao and Vice Mayor Tauranga, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then we have the proposed agenda for January 12th. Any changes? Okay.
Well, I don't, I was going to offer to the commission, we will have your final two ordinances, one dealing with the solicitation, which I know was discussed at your last meeting, as well as the updates to your business tax receipt ordinance. They'd be subject to staff's review, but it looks like you have a lighter agenda. So if you wanted to add one or both of those ordinances, I think we could schedule it to do so at this time.
Are you ready for that?
Sure.
Okay. Because all we have is the two annexations, right?
Yes. So let's go ahead. So for the benefit of the clerk, that is the changes to Chapter 62 and Chapter 70. And I'll get you the ordinance titles as soon as possible, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Okay. With those two additions, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Tauranga and Commissioner Walker, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Well, we have no workshop items today. I did not see any emails.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
For the meeting of January 10th, we don't have a, a workshop item?
No, we do not.
Okay.
We had to roll.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm just highlighting what Vice Mayor was talking about the other time, that sometimes we don't have workshop items and we can merge the meetings. I think that's the thing. I think that would be like what we were talking about, maybe we should go back to. Like, you know, you can have a full meeting, but if you don't need really a workshop session because you don't really have, you know, you're not loaded up for Thursday night and you don't have a workshop item. You know, I'm just kind of, we don't need, I know it's interesting to discuss that. I'm just saying that's probably an example of kind of the old way versus the new way, as we kind of decide how we want to be. But just, just a side comment.
Yeah. And I do know, in, in talking with Jennifer, another option as well is putting our workshop items, if we have a hole in Thursday, put in our workshop items on Thursday. You know?
So-
So I think there's all different ways we can work around it.
And Rebecca and I are meeting this week and we'll, we'll come up with some, some ideas for all of you to review.
And even this week, for example, it would have been my preference to maybe cancel this meeting and move everything to Thursday. So it's a Thursday night.
Good example.
So instead of, if we're going to cancel a meeting, let it be the Tuesday as opposed to the Thursday. I know the burden that puts on staff. I get that. But, you know, it's for the public.
I agree. The prominent meeting in the minds of citizens to me is Thursday.
Right.
Okay. We are on to informational items, commission discussion. I have not received any emails from anybody, so I'm assuming there isn't any. City Clerk's update?
Just one. I, I've talked to you about the mayor. In January and early February, I've had to change some of my appointments that have to be on Tuesday. So Michelle will be attending the, the work sessions for at least January and probably the first meeting of February, just so you know. That would be my only update. Thank you.
City Managers' update?
Nothing substantial, Mayor. I just want to mention, you know, some of the events that we've had, specifically Old Fashioned Christmas. And just commend staff for essentially how efficient they were, both in setup and, and breakdown and the work that they put in, hours and hours, 15, 16 hours a day. And I've heard nothing but, but support and kudos from the community. So, you know, Parks and Rec leads the charge on Old Fashioned Christmas. And I know Public Works Streets are involved as well. We had CPOs in the neighborhoods. We had our shuttle buses from our remote lots. And I think it must have been one of the biggest Old Fashioned Christmases and, that I remember, and I haven't been here nearly as long as all of you, but I think it was a great event. And, and I'm really proud of staff for what they did.
Thank you. Okay. City Attorneys' update?
Oh, I don't, I don't have anything, Mayor. I would have submitted to you in advance.
Okeydoke. Commission comments. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Certainly first to echo the city manager's comments that I am incredibly confident that our Old Fashioned Christmas was the best holiday event in the county. I think it was tremendously attended and everything just went just wonderfully throughout the entire night. But also, Academy DaVinci is putting on their holiday concert today at Dunedin High School at 6:30. And then on Thursday, the middle school is putting on their holiday event at 7:00 at the middle school. So if anybody wants to attend, they'd love to have your support.
Okay. Commissioner, anything?
Oh, okay. Well, two things really. I just want to further commend our staff. We always say, we got to take care of the basics first. We can't have quality of life stuff happen if we don't have our basics covered, water, sewer, sanitation, all that. But the bottom line is, you know, our Rec and Parks, you know, they, they give us, they give us that quality of life stuff. And they work hard. I mean, they're, they're tireless during this time. So, and it was great. And I think I'd mentioned a couple of years earlier that I had actually talked to somebody at Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council yesterday who has a girlfriend that makes him go to like all the holiday parades in Pinellas County. And so he had been to ours. And he said, he goes, right now, Mo, you guys are first. And he said, and he talked about, because we didn't have the gaps, so we were organized and, you know, managing it well. And, and it just, it was good. So it was, so I, I thought that was a great compliment. On that note, I'd also say that I was just formally inducted to be on the executive board for Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council yesterday. So it's an honor to serve on behalf of this commission, to represent us in that regard. And, and then lastly, I do want to commend Rebecca, because I know that the next local planning agency meeting is a big one, because we have like four people coming off of local planning agency. And as we all know, that's a very, very important board to us. And apparently, we've gotten lots of applications because of us really working it and lots of good applications. And so that makes me feel, feel good about that. I want them to make sure that the board has good choices to recommend to us. So thank you for that. And that's all.
Commissioner?
Yeah. So after the parade was over on Saturday, I was walking down the street. I, I heard the same comment three times. Nobody that, the parade that Dunedin puts on in celebration of Christmas is by far one of the best that they'd ever been to. And it was, there was the same comment. And I, I do want to just commend the staff and just say that, you know, it's, it's things like that that make Dunedin so special.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll tell staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Obviously, we want to thank staff for all their hard work. And they've got any number of things still coming up. We've got, continue to have Santa on our fire truck going throughout. They visited my neighborhood last night.
We chased them. We were in a golf cart and we were like chasing them.
That's really cool.
Until we could see it firsthand.
On Saturday, we have Wreaths Across America at our cemetery at noon. On Sunday, we have the Suncoast Brotherhood Toy Run and a concert at the community center. So there's still plenty of things to do for our community. I also want to do a little bit of a shout out to the Jolly Trolley Organization. They hosted us in the parade. And they really did it up this time with the decorations and the bubbles. And thank you, Jorge, for filling the bubbles. And the, you know, the reindeer and such hanging out, which was a really nice added touch that we had not had in the past. I want to thank Parks and Rec. We definitely didn't run out of candy. Probably for, you know, I mean, we haven't run out really in the last year or two, but-
Yeah, but that was next level.
That was next level. So you could really not think about it. I mean, I was throwing handfuls. And you want to do that. You know, you want to, to be very generous when you're doing it, not one candy at a time or two candies at a time. So, so that was, you know, really, really cool. I have nothing at this moment to report on any of my liaison positions. Everybody's taking time off. So there's nothing new for me to report.
When do you get sworn into your-
January. I mean, it's in, I've been appointed, but I start in January, whatever the January meeting is at Forward Pinellas. So I know, I have a Forward Pinellas workshop tomorrow. Could not begin to tell you what it's about. I'm going to study this afternoon. So, you know, and, and then my tourist development council meeting is next week. And, and I, again, I haven't even gotten the agenda for that. So I don't know what that's about either. So, so that's it. This will be our last commission meeting until January 10th. So I certainly wish all of you-
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And we wish all of that to the folks watching. And job well done. And let's get some cake.
Get some cake.
We are adjourned.
That was brief and brilliant. That was brief and brilliant.